We are good.
Good evening and welcome to the December 14, 2021 regular meeting of the Auburn Maine Planning Board. We'll begin this evening with a roll call. We'll start on my right.
Riley Bergeron.
Stacy LeBlanc.
Matthew Duval.
Evan Seer.
Brian Dubois.
Darren Finnegan.
Considering that we have two regular members absent, our associate member, Mr. Dubois, will, with the board's consent, act as a full member for this meeting. That means you can vote and make motions.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number two, the minutes from November. Any questions, changes to the minutes? Hearing all, I'll ask, hearing none, I'll ask for the approval of the minutes by unanimous consent. So approved. Onto item three, the discussion of the zoning map amendment. This was an item that came back to us from city council because we forgot to include finding, or we didn't forget to, we did not include finding of apps in our decision related to the strip zones. So, staff?
So I provided a staff report, basically was just listening to the tape. I think in listening to the tape, you could pull out exactly, you know, the reasons why individual board members had concerns with the proposal, and then some suggested changes that would have made, potentially made some board members comfortable with moving part of the proposal forward. But I've attempted to just pull those out more as kind of a summary of the discussion on the first page, and then on the second page of the staff report, there's really five, five discussion points that supported the conclusion that the board ultimately reached in making a negative recommendation. So I left out the ones that would have maybe supported a different conclusion and tried to summarize the ones that supported the conclusion that the board reached. The first was that the proposed expansion of residential strips conflicts with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan and expands development outside the core of the city and into agriculturally zoned areas. Two was members of the public with substantial ownership of the land have largely opposed the proposal for reasons consistent with what the board discussed and what we've included here. Three, the proposal would increase taxes on existing homes, land in areas that may or may not even be developable or desirable for development. Four, that the proposal would allow for increased development in the Lake Auburn and Taylor Pond watersheds, when it was pointed out that that was without consideration of the recently released Lake Auburn watershed study recommendations, including the requirement for low-impact development. And five was that the combined impact of this proposal, the residential strips and the future land use map doubling density possibilities in some areas may change the character of neighborhoods, and it was pointed out that the board has a responsibility to consider whether that changes what Auburn wants. Really, the ordinance does require that the planning board forward reasons for recommendations. That's pretty clear. So we're just looking at this as an opportunity not to reconsider your decision, but to pass those along. The council has acted on that ordinance change, so it doesn't really change an outcome. I just think it completes our responsibility here and the planning board's responsibility so the council can understand why that recommendation was made. So happy to edit these, add to them, take away from them. Just want to, wanted to propose a starting point for the board to adopt as reasons based on that discussion.
Great, thank you very much. So this is not a public hearing, right?
It is not.
It is not a public hearing, okay, so we don't have to hear from the public. At this point, I'll open it up to the board for either questions for staff or comments, discussions about the reasons that have been outlined, whether there are additional ones people want to add or what, so. Mr. Seer.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we should include number two. Only because it implies that there were a lot of people that were opposed to this, and our policy state is now the practice of the board to take a poll of those in favor, those opposed, the number of people with a particular position is not a factor. So I think to include that as a finding would sort of put us at odds with our own policy. I also look at number five and wonder if that puts us in a position in which we are finding ahead of time that there is a problem with the FLU because we are saying that doubling the densities anywhere constitutes a change in the character of a neighborhood. If we were to say that now, I think we would really be putting ourselves in a position where if we implement the future land use plan, which does, it doesn't double things everywhere, but there's certainly areas where that happens, we would be putting ourselves in a position now to say we can't support that then, which sort of looks wonky in that we forwarded a favorable recommendation for the future land use plan. So those are my two pieces of input.
Thank you, anyone else? Yep, Mr. Bergeron.
This is also what I was thinking about number five, is it also kind of where it finishes with what Auburn wants, it kind of reinforces the problem that Mr. Seer with number two, that it's an opinion poll that we were taking. So I was confused by that wording. But I also would say that I agree with Mr. Seer that number two is not one of the reasons that I voted the way I did last month.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Dubois?
Yeah, I plan to abstain from any vote for this tonight for a couple of reasons. One, I was an associate member last week that, or last month, that did not get the opportunity to vote. If I had, I would have voted in favor. So with that in mind, I will provide some input, and that is, number three, I'm not sure if that fits, that was one of the questions I had for staff. The proposal would increase taxes on existing homes, land in areas that may or may not even be developable or desirable. My understanding is that the assessing department would take that into consideration. If it was wet or undevelopable, then there would not be a value increase to those properties. So it would be a condition-based assessment going forward. That's still correct, I understand that correctly?
Yeah, it's probably more on the desirable side. If the property, and I guess that's a matter of the point of view, if the property owner didn't desire to develop it, they may still have more value in their land. They may see.
Right. So I would think that number three would be scrapped because it's not a price increase across the board.
I would tend to agree based on the idea that if it really hinges on the idea that they don't desire to develop it, then again, that's not really our cup of tea, right? That's not our charge.
Anyone else?
I'd like to speak again real quick, because I realize I made a comment on number five, but I didn't, I believe number three should just go. I described my issue with number five, but I didn't give a solution.
Well, I want to, I want to throw something out with respect to five as well. So coming on number two, I agree completely, that seems at odds with what the planning board itself is actually charged to do. We do hear a public comment and hear the issues, but I don't think there's a sort of mass that sways us in one way or the other. For number three, I understand, Mr. Dubois, what you're saying and agree with it. The one thing I did hear in addition is that it wasn't necessarily desirability, but there were people who would have their taxes go up without them even doing something, and that they were worried about hardship related to that. I don't feel strongly about number three with that, but that is something that I recall. So it wasn't just a desirability piece. With number five, I think this is something that I actually said during the meeting, and I was throwing it out there as, for something for the board to consider and not necessarily a reason for making the decision, so I would be happy to see that either altered or changed. So, Mr. Seer?
Again, you know, the record shows that I voted against the recommendation last month, having said that, I think if five were to move forward, in trying to recall the meeting, that this was a part of the discussion, but that the discussion really hinged on whether it would be responsible to do both, and that if I recall, those who were in favor of sending the negative recommendation were leaning towards the opinion that implementing the FLU was a more appropriate solution than widening the strips. And so if that's what number five is saying, I think that that better captures the discussion that I recall anyway.
Thank you, that certainly reflects more of my thinking. Anyone else have comments or thoughts? So I think to move forward, we should move, maybe we can step through. Or let's see, I guess the best way would be we've had a proposed change in text for number five. And that proposal was that members of the board were interested in passing the new future land use map before considering the strips. And then striking item two. And I don't know where we landed with item three, so.
I don't think I'm following you on number five. I thought number five was about setting precedence, and that's why we're kind of striking that. Maybe I'm changing gears too quickly.
So what I heard Mr. Seer say, and I actually agree with it, is that this, what is written here in number five, does not accurately reflect a reason for, this is just the decision being made, but he suggested that he heard people say that the, there were members of the board who wanted to see the future land use map passed before considering the strips.
Does this edit better capture that sentiment? We'll look for a motion eventually.
Yes, and to answer the question about that you were raising, as written, I think it sets a specific precedent. If revised, I think it better reflects what people were saying who were in favor of forwarding a negative recommendation.
Yeah, agreed.
And it seems there's consensus developing around just eliminating number two.
That is what I would do.
That was my thought as well.
Does anybody disagree with that? Nope. Number three, does anybody want to make any edits to number three? Or propose that we get rid of it altogether?
Well, this is actually more of a question as to what the point that Mr. Dubois brought up, it would still in some cases increase the taxes even if they're not, even if it is undevelopable just because it's residentially zoned. Even if, I don't think the assessor is going to measure every, to the extent of that being that specific. Like there, overall, I think it is accurate that the taxes would go up, but that's not one of the reasons that I voted against the recommendation. I would say specifically number four and number one were the reasons that I personally voted the way I did last month.
So Eric, is it accurate to say that it could be undevelopable in the sense that you don't have the frontage to increase your, to add another house, right?
I think in general, if you increase the amount of acreage in the residential zone, then in general, there would be an increase of value. But as, as Brian Dubois had pointed out, they, somebody could, let's say that whole increased area was a complete wetland that was not developable. Somebody could go to the assessor and explain that and then have them reduce that increase. But in general, it would result in an increase in valuation unless you had those specific conditions. If half of the new residential land was undevelopable because it was wetland, the other half was developable, you'd still have the value of a house lot in that, in that increase potentially. So I think maybe could increase or, or strike it, could instead of would, or, or strike it entirely. I think either way is fine.
So since you heard it on, not everyone is here who are participating that voted for it, I think that changing that would to could would suit me. I think that's a good edit. Mr. Seer?
So I, I'm going to make an argument that it should be stricken on the following grounds. As we talk about taxation and valuation, I'm thinking about where language exists for the planning board with regard to our responsibility to taxes and valuation for citizens. And if I'm remembering correctly, I am thinking about the special exception criteria in which we are tasked with not negatively affecting the value of neighbors or a neighborhood that, you know, when we approve a special exception will not negatively affect the value. And so I would be worried, since, since we're charged, I guess that's the only place I could think about where we're charged with sort of thinking about value and taxes. And we generally tie taxes to value, but it would seem to be at odds for that to be something that we are worried about, that we are not worried about decreasing value, but that we're unwilling to do something that would increase taxes, which only occurs because there's an increase in value. I guess ostensibly, I look at the special exception criteria, and what it's telling us is that what we're doing should be increasing value in an area and not decreasing it, I guess is the way I read that, so. I'm not sure I was articulate enough, but.
Many people would see an increase in their property value as a positive.
I guess another way to think about it is how much do we actually think about valuation? I mean, that's, I hear that in your comment, and the answer is very little. So.
You're certainly not obligated to comment on a, on a valuation change.
Yep. That, yeah, I mean, I would be happy for that to go. I'd also be happy to keep it with the could instead of the would. So.
And I think Riley Bergeron, I think you said that that was not one of the factors that weighed in, in your decision.
No, that was, that was not one of the reasons that I voted the way I did. And also, would it be appropriate to ask if that was a reason for anybody who did vote, that's, that's one of the reasons they voted?
I was just going to ask that, so.
Wasn't a consideration for me.
No, neither.
Okay, then I would say, given who's here, we should strike that, yep. Okay. Anybody have any more comments about the three that are now up on the screen? If not, I would need a motion.
Can I, I would ask that. It doesn't conflict with the goals of the new revised comprehensive plan, but the discussion was that this was the 2010 comprehensive plan that was being used because the FLU had not yet been, none of that language had been gone through a second reading yet, so that should probably be qualified.
Yeah, agreed. We should qualify the second one as well. The 2020, on number three.
Yeah, I think as long as people understand it, either you can use either reference. If we called it the 2020 comp plan, future land use map updates deserve consideration.
Yeah. At this point, I need a motion to adopt these findings as written on the, on the screen.
So moved?
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Oh, can I ask a question? First, as part of discussion.
Of course, yeah, yeah.
To be clear, this vote does not indicate that we agreed with or disagreed with the recommendation that was sent to the board, just that by voting in the affirmative, we agree that these were the findings that were used?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay. I just want to make that clear. So for instance, I voted against the recommendation last time, but yes, I agree that these were the findings that I heard people using, so.
Great. Any more questions, discussion on this before we call for a vote? All those in favor? All those against? Abstentions? Great. Those findings are sent by 601.
Five.
501, sorry, can't count. All right, the next item on our agenda is a workshop on proposed amendment to the phosphorus ordinance. Staff?
This is just, basically, it's a housekeeping issue for our ordinance related to Division Two Phosphorus Control, Section 60 dash 1070. And the proposal is essentially, this update addresses the utilization of the most current design standards set forth by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection to treat phosphorus export for a project or projects over 575 square feet of ground floor area within the Taylor Pond in Lake Auburn watershed. The technical guide for design standards of phosphorus control, best management practices. The consideration is to update from May 1990 to the March 2016 version. The benefit of this, really, that's found in the, in the main stormwater management design manual, is utilizing low-impact development techniques. We've got a lot of non-conforming sites that still require addressing phosphorus in development projects, and this is a way that we really can get at addressing that and treating phosphorus in these two watersheds. So I think this is a great way to improve water quality in both Taylor Pond and, and in Lake Auburn. It's kind of straightforward, very specific design manual in terms of language change, and basically, we'd want to take this to the council, and we just want to get a planning board input prior to making a recommendation to the council.
Thank you. Any questions for staff from the board?
I guess I only have one, what, what the, where did the 575-square-foot trigger line come from?
That, that's what's in our current ordinance right now. So we're not changing any of that, we're just basically, when you hit this, you know, if someone wants to put a garage in and it's over that threshold, and it's in the watershed, they've, they've got to do a phosphorus control plan. So oftentimes, the design doesn't work because the old standards technically uses buffers often, quite often, and they don't have enough land to do that. Either the project's dead in its tracks, or we, we push it out the buffers, or they, it just, it doesn't become as good as a project if you could implement low-impact development techniques. So this is a way to address a lot of those small, non-conforming lots, so.
So to be clear, it allows us to address an issue that we have with standards that are better than the standards we currently have?
Correct.
So solves a problem?
Yes.
And improves the?
Yes. It's a win-win.
Yep, I guess the one question I have is how does this interact with the new tiny house law from state level?
So tiny house, we were looking at that actually today, just before we came in. So it's, tiny house under the definition, under the state definition, it's 400 square feet or less. So tiny house wouldn't strike phosphorus control unless you had multiple tiny houses. The way that some of our accessory rules are written right now, that, that could be a problem if we don't address it. I think we, we need to address it with the board. That's a separate conversation, but that's certainly an interesting piece there. But, you know, in terms of phosphorus control, unless they had an additional project that, so oftentimes, someone does a garage at, at 500 square feet, and it was, it was done in that time period when the ordinance was written, which was, I think, '93. So we're tracking from there, if we're seeing in the file, and then they put a tiny home, and then that kicks them over that 575-square-foot threshold, then at that point, they do have to treat for phosphorus. So, but if it's an undeveloped lot that hasn't had any development prior to the ordinance being written, then, then they're not subject to phosphorus control standards because of the size of the tiny home, which is under 400, small.
So is it then cumulative since the?
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so what do you, you need from us, just our recommendation to move this on to city council?
I think, or we could schedule it for a public hearing with, with you.
So we, yeah, that was, thank you for answering the question I was actually asking. So we do need a public hearing on this?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess with that, I would ask, is there anybody on the board that does not want to schedule a public hearing for this? Great, seeing that, I think we will forward, schedule a public hearing for this and then send it on to council. Thank you. Item number five is public comment. Seeing as how there are no members of the public here to comment, we will move on to item number six, which is planning board items for discussion. Six A is the upcoming income standards proposed under the state statute. Did you all want to summarize those, or I can also do it, doesn't matter. I, I can also do it. Doesn't matter.
If you wanted, that's great. Otherwise, we can.
Okay, is my understanding and staff will correct me if I'm wrong, there is legislation that's being proposed for the upcoming, what is it, one hundred and thirtieth legislative session, legislature or something like that?
I remember the number, but yeah.
Um, I think it's one thirty. To remove income standards statewide for any zone, any zone where a house can be built, right? So it's not just strictly residential zones. And to also make the minimum lot size no smaller than two times the largest, or two times the less dense zoning that's in effect within the city. So in the case of Auburn, it will be low country residential is one unit per three acres. So the state statute would then determine that six acres would be the smallest minimum lot size for an agricultural zone. Is that right?
Yeah, and we're, we're also reading in that, that it's twice the lowest density district, like you said, the low-density country residential. Then it references another state statute for taxation that has a five-acre maximum. So we, I think that, you know, there's, there still may be changes, but I think it's twice the lowest density or five acres, whichever is smaller.
Okay.
So we would, I think we'd end up with a five-acre minimum instead of a six.
And there is bipartisan support for this, right?
There is.
So it, I think it makes sense for us as a city to actually be prepared should this pass. So did you, were you able to find out what the timeline was for it going into effect once it gets signed by the governor?
We, we don't know the exact timeline, but we will be figuring that out. Unless you heard back, I don't, I don't think we know the exact timeline at this point.
My impression is that it actually could be quite quick, like immediate.
In the spring.
In the spring. And if, as is, it goes through in its past, it's going to fundamentally change our agricultural zone. Our definition of a farm will become null and void. And our minimum lot size will be halved, which will enable anybody to basically build any house they want on a five-acre lot throughout the ag zone. Is that correct?
We think so, yeah, in its current draft, so.
Yep.
Would there be a severability? Can we sever? Part of the definition that describes income and use? Or would the entire thing just be found to be?
So.
Void.
Yeah, it's still in a draft form, but we would no longer be able to use income as a determining factor for, to build the house. So maybe that's a discussion that will be had. I think it's, it's just something that we need to think about if, if Auburn as a community wants to maintain a level of growth control like we've had in the ag zone, we'd have to have a different standard other than income. So it could be more of a use description or it's still early, it's still in a draft form, but that's, the income standard will no longer be an allowable one. And I know as we went through the ag study, one of the sort of faults, I guess, that was pointed out was that our ag zone reduces the value of land to a point that there's not enough value to warrant a conservation easement or an agricultural easement. There's not enough value to the farmer to add that restriction to their land, so. This may open up other tools for conservation that we really haven't had access to for some of the most important land, but it really kind of takes that, that control, that decision-making out of the hands of the city and into, puts it in the hands of individual property owners. Something that is at a staff level. I think the week after, after next, we have a meeting at a staff level, level to kind of brainstorm what are the potential outcomes of this. And then I think we're, we're absolutely going to have to have a discussion with the city council and with the, with the planning board about how Auburn should move forward and whether or not any changes should be made to our ordinance.
Okay. Good. One thing I was considering is should the board convene a subgroup and pull somebody from city council and somebody from the conservation committee to actually start working on this issue? And it sounds like if we were to do that in the new year, that the timing actually works quite well.
I think it, I think it would. It would give, I think it'd give you a chance to touch base with the mayor or council as well about how, how, how the board will approach that.
Yep. Okay. Great. Are there, as, as we think about this, are there people here who would be interested in participating on a subgroup to think through these issues? Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
If, if needed, sure.
Okay, great. So that, I mean, it's not binding and other people would be welcome to volunteer. But I think we have interest here. I don't think we want the group to get particularly large. But I think some kind of group that pairs members of council with someone from the conservation commission would be, and then people from the planning board would be a good thing to do.
Great.
Thanks.
Not really. I think one of the things we need to think about is tiny homes are less than four hundred square feet. Auburn has a seven hundred square foot minimum for single families. We welcome any feedback about whether or not we still should have that four hundred and one to six hundred and ninety-nine square feet where you can't build a small home. It doesn't meet the definition of a tiny home. I think it'd be hard to sit across the table from somebody that has a three hundred and ninety-nine square foot home, wants to add a hundred and twenty square foot bedroom and tell them that that's not okay, but if they go to seven hundred, that is okay. So I think logically it's just, it's kind of impractical, impractical to still have that, that restriction if tiny homes are allowed.
Great. So the next step then is to hammer out our local ordinance, so have a workshop to hammer something out.
And, and John, I think, has some additional thoughts on it.
Yeah, so there's, there's probably going to be three main areas. One is, you know, it can be either or, right? So under the definition of the new definition that's been now passed is that it's, it could be an accessory structure or it could be the, the primary residential structure on the lot, on the lot. So that really makes changes under, in the accessory area, under a certain section, and then in each of our residential zones or any zone that allows housing. So there'll be, it, it appears that there will be multiple edits throughout the ordinance on multiple pages. It'll affect a lot of the ordinance as it's, as it's written, so to give a lot of flexibility. And then under our accessory ordinance, I think we need to think about, you know, right now we have a thousand-foot threshold for accessory structures. I think as a board, we need to decide that, hey, are we only going to allow just one tiny home as an accessory structure, limit it to one, limit it to two? We get into, you know, situations where we're really affecting subsurface wastewater law and things like that, that we, because we got to treat. In rural areas, we got to treat our wastewater and keep our horizontal separation with our wells and things like that. So there, there's a lot of different things to think about as I start to peel the onion on this. And I just want you guys to start thinking about it as, I think a workshop with a subgroup might be another great idea on this to really start hammering out where, you know, what we think we're going to take for a recommendation to the board on some of the specific language, so.
Okay, great. So just to clarify, the thousand-foot threshold, that's a max?
That's a max. That is a max for an accessory dwellings for two-acre lots, two acres and less. So, but then there is no, you could have eighteen tiny homes and acres, you know, lots, two acres or more. So it's really bizarre. We don't really address that. So we've got to, it just points out some other things we've really got to address because the language is war on this, on the state law. So it's going to fall under both. So we've got to address it in both areas. And it really could get, it could get a little bit, you know, I can't say the word out of hand, but, you know, people really could exaggerate this little village on a five-acre lot the way that it's written right now. So you've just got to be aware of that and we've got to address that.
Got it. Thank you. And then just to say, I have been to some places out west where they have these tiny home colonies. You can rent your tiny home next to another tiny home.
Eric and I were talking about retiring today, so.
There you go. Okay, so yeah, I think, you know, workshop on that would be great. Get us started anyway and decide to go from there. Item C, this one I haven't heard about. What do we got with?
So this is really addressing, you know, COVID issues essentially and pickup and, you know, keeping separation from folks. And we, we're really kind of, under the, under our ordinance, you know, particularly in businesses with fast food restaurants, you know, it requires us to go to planning board, right? So if they're going to have a pickup window or ordering window, that really drives them under the definition of a fast food restaurant and it kicks them into a planning board. So we were just trying to brainstorm around maybe not so much a fast food restaurant, but often restaurants now in particular have pickup and maybe a pickup window. Well, if it was a new, let's say, you know, any one restaurant has that ability to do that, does that kick them into that planning board area because now they've got a pickup window or a fast food? Kind of like a fast food restaurant. They don't have, they don't have necessarily an ordering board. I think if we, as a board, if we, we looked at that and kind of discussed that a little bit and maybe in, again, in a workshop or something like that, I don't want to create a lot of work for you guys, but look at that definition and how that applies to, you know, the COVID world on a pickup for, for a restaurant. You know, particularly, I'm going to give you an example, Five Guys is not, you know, we may, we could debate if that's fast food or not, but it's considered fast food gourmet. They don't necessarily have an ordering board. People can either, you know, they have an app, they can, they can do it, make their order on an app or they call in and they come by and pick it up. Does that constitute coming to the planning board? So that's, you know, how, how we define that is, is something that I guess as staff, we're kind of, kind of like toying with that a little bit and how that's defined. So, and I think that this would apply if we really start looking at businesses, restaurants. And it doesn't necessarily have to be restaurants. I use restaurants as examples, but, you know, parts stores. Think about my brother's business and how they operated during COVID for HVAC and a parts and equipment, right? They picked up through a window. They're, they're driving in, driving out, they're, you know, does that constitute coming to the board now? Because it's kind of a drive-in, drive-out kind of situation. So grocery stores, we now have pickup windows. You know, if that's an allowed use, but it's, it's again a pickup window. We're generating different types of traffic. Do we want to come to the planning board on that? So again, there's just some things to think about, multiple types of retail, same thing, so. Just wanted to kind of get that open for discussion.
Okay, so are you, you all would like to have a workshop on this? That would help.
I don't know. I don't know if that's the answer or not, but I, I just wanted to, you know, bring it in front of the board and see what you guys thought about. And what your thoughts are. Are we going to define that as a, you know, very similar to fast food where we, we kick it, everything goes to planning board or are we going to, is it going to be something that staff can review internally and then we can, you know, make our findings from that, so I just.
Yeah, right now, as soon as you add that pickup window or a takeout component, it kicks it up to special exception and has to go to planning board. And I think the Five Guys is a good example. That's not a true. You drive up, look at a board, order through a microphone and then pick up your food, but you could order on your phone and then drive through and pick, pick something up at a window that's pre-ordered. Or if Village Inn wants to add a pickup window, you've always been able to do takeout there if you, you wanted to. As soon as we add a pickup window, the way that our definitions are now, it really becomes, it leaves the realm of, of a permitted use and becomes a special exception. So whether or not that still makes sense with COVID, I guess. It's something that a lot of restaurants were able to do temporarily last year or a year and a half ago under the governor's order and our mayor's order with signage and some other accommodations, but now it's, it just doesn't seem to be going away and we don't have all those flexibilities to do that at existing restaurants.
Yeah, I think that's the biggest takeaway is that it's not going away. And, and even though the order is, is now not there anymore, I think businesses are still operating that way, so. I don't know if staff would want to address that or if that's something we've got to address. And then there's always going to be the next person that comes in right after them and they see the person next door that they, well, they've got it already. How did they get exempted? How did it work for them? So it's just, we just want to make it fair and equitable.
Well, we've got, we've got two different things here, right, with the pickup window, which has a certain traffic flow. And then the, the curbside pickup with the dedicated parking spots. Am I understanding that correctly? There, there are two different things on the same item here?
Yeah, it was two different ideas too. And it's ironic that, that the, you know, the hamburger place has both, right? So they have, they could, they can drive in or they can pick it up, one or the other. But there's a lot of businesses out there that have the, the parking spots, you know, grocery store parking spots. How does that affect people or do we want to take a closer look at that where people are in the business or walking in and out? How does that affect pedestrians in the, in the parking lot, things like that?
I was going to say this too. It's not just pedestrians, but I'm a big fan of like Uber Eats and Grubhub, so that's another piece too, right? So you've got people, you've got that, that industry that is not going away, right? So COVID eventually, potentially, hopefully will subside, but I don't think the automation like the Uber Eats and the Grubhub, that's not necessarily. I think it's just probably going to expand. So you, you factor that into, into the consideration of, you know, having these places that you want to get food fast, you order it online. They, someone has to go pick it up for you and they bring it to you. It's kind of a very similar, along the same lines.
So multiple businesses in the community have this service through Uber Eats? Is that how, is that?
Uber, yeah, yep. DoorDash, like all of those, yep. Am I the only one that uses it?
No, it, it's quite popular at a certain college in Lewiston.
Fifty. No, I'm just kidding.
But I, I think the, the issues, one with the traffic pattern, I would assume that the standard element that kicks it to the planning board would be the, the drive-through and, you know, so no one gets hit because of the, the poor traffic pattern and such. The parking spots, I mean, has it been a problem? Is there something that needs to be solved with that where we need to come before the planning board or is this something that, you know, organically the businesses are creative and they're, you know, there's nothing that's, that I know of that's rearing its ugly head with those parking spots, right?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Yeah, not with the parking spots. We've had a number of businesses that either did it temporarily during the first year or so of COVID, used a window, a makeshift window for pickup, that kind of thing. And a number of businesses asked if they could add a drive-up window to be ready for if that ever needs to happen again, so they can safely sell food from their business. that ever needs to happen again, so they can safely sell food from their business. And I think that's the question. Do we just say yes, it's a possibility, but you need to put together a site plan proposal and go to the Planning Board? Or have things changed in a way that that should be a simpler process for an existing restaurant or business to add that drive-up window? Or a new business, but where, where do you draw that line that it, this is not fast food, this doesn't have the traffic? I think that's what we're struggling with. Do we need to better define that line, or are we just fine? We'll, we'll send her to the Planning Board? That's fine, too. That's how we've handled it in the past, but we didn't, we didn't have much of this sort of hybrid, you can order your food and you can pick it up. We didn't have that in the past as far as ordering ahead and picking it up, or Uber Eats, those, the businesses are evolving. It was, fast food was McDonald's, and you drove up, you talked to somebody through a microphone or through a window, and, you know, just a couple minutes later, you got your food. A lot of places offering that are, are not fast food in that sense, but they're still looking to offer a, a way to pick up without coming inside.
Yeah, so, you know, my initial thought was as long as it had an ordering, ordering board at the location, then it might, you may be kicked into the Planning Board at that point. But if it's just a pickup window or just, you know, a parking spot, and then, and then they deliver the food out to you, or the product or whatever it is, then it wouldn't necessarily kick you into Planning Board review. But I just, I just wanted to touch base and get clarification from the board on that, or how to interpret it.
I guess, well, actually, John, I'm gonna address something you just said, which just occurred to me as you were saying it. If I were a fast food chain and I didn't feel like having to go through a special exception, I would have a board with a QR code and say it's not an ordering board, it's just a board with a QR code that allows someone to go to my website to order online for a fast food restaurant, right? So we gotta think about like workarounds, right? Like what's, what, what does that mean? But I guess what would help me in this discussion as a Planning Board member would be to have staff really articulate what it is that they are trying to avoid. So having special, having a special exception allow, i- is really like trying to avoid a problem, right? Because it requires someone to come to the board, so we have oversight. So, and working through this problem would really help me to understand what is it that staff is trying to avoid? Is it specifically vehicular volume, the traffic counts? Is it poor circulation? Is it placement within the city? Because I think if we understand those, we might be able to develop a metric to define that problem in a, in a better way that allows us to say, well, if you are gonna create this specific types of problem in this way, that's the one that's gonna come to us. So then we don't even have to define like a fast food restaurant or this or that. Any business that's gonna create this problem in this way is gonna come to us. But that would help me.
I think it's, it's largely traffic, I think, is the big distinction between a traditional sit-down restaurant and a traditional drive-through.
That was my thought, too, is if it's, if it's a business that already has customers and is trying to keep them by opening a window versus a business, a new business in a place, it would just be kind of, because if it's traffic's the concern, it'd be new traffic generated. If it was just a restaurant trying to keep the same customers, I don't know why that would have to come before the board.
Although, I agree. I think, I agree with Mr. Seer that the real problem definition would help us in the discussion a lot. I do wanna come back to Ms. LeBlanc's point about DoorDash and things like that, that they really do increase volume to, at certain restaurants, and they can increase traffic, right? If you don't have to go and sit down, wait for a table, tables are all full, you can still crank out more food to customers, then that increases traffic, right? So I think, I think we need to consider that because I agree with her that that problem, it's not a problem, but that practice is going to get more common. Anything else on this one?
Again, I, I guess I see it as two separate issues, and if, if a restaurant or any other entity wants to dedicate their prime parking spots or curbside pickup or what have you, then that's a real business decision for them. But it doesn't impact any type of safety concern in my eyes that I can think of. It's probably more proactive on the safety end when, when we're facing things like COVID. So I applaud them for, for pivoting like that. I'm not sure why we would scrutinize it the same way as a drive-through window with traffic pattern concerns and such, so.
I agree with Mr. Dubois.
Okay. Do you, you all have enough on this one? Yep, great. Thank you. So one more Planning Board item for discussion, just reminding the board that there are openings right now. There's an opening for associate member. There's also an opening for a full member. Eric, do you know when those actually can be filled?
So they were advertised at the end of last week, so we're looking for applicants right now. I do not know the date of the next appointment committee, but I think it's in the ad on the website.
Okay.
So have you received any applications? Because I believe I was told there was one that was submitted.
Yeah, so the, Steve Martelli's position term expires in January, so that one was already advertised, so I think we received a couple for that position. The city clerk is very specific about, and Steve may be one of them, too, to, for reappointment. City clerk's very specific about advertising each position very specifically. So we've just recently advertised the two councilors' seats that became vacant as of last night. I don't know which, which of those ads the, the applications responded to, but it'd be great if we received more than one for Steve's, then they can start to backfill the, the other ones. I would encourage Brian, as an associate, our only associate currently, to apply for one of the full seats if that's something you're interested in. Then hopefully we can, we can backfill the associate seats as well. I'll check with Sue, though, and on the schedule as well as how many applications she's received so far.
Super.
Great, thanks. You, will you email the board that?
Yep.
Info? Great, thank you. Items for January.
We don't actually have any projects coming back in January. We will be talking to the council about prioritizing ordinance changes that will implement portions of the future land use map. So I don't know if we'll have any of those ready, but we can hopefully have some of the items that we've talked about for workshops ready for the, for the January meeting. Our city planner position is hopefully gonna be advertised this week, so we're trying to refill that capacity. Agron, Agron Appliance has applied for a warehouse site plan approval within the subdivision that they already occupy a building in off of Kitty Hawk, where Harriman Associates is. We've gotta take a look at that application. I don't think that that will come to Planning Board because it's permitted use in an approved industrial commercial subdivision, but that's a significant project. Not a lot of traffic, but it's a significant project.
Does it have a parts drive-through window?
No, no, it doesn't.
Not yet.
Not that we've seen so far, anyway.
Great. So hopefully we can coordinate for January, then, if there aren't any projects. Once you've spoken with council about that state statute on the income standards.
Yep.
We can talk about an approach to that. That would be great. Excellent. Well, if there's nothing else, then we'll move on to item eight on the agenda.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. I have a second. All those in favor?
The drive-through.